All right, I'm gonna give you a quick update. In the last week, we've had two hundred and twenty additional cases. That's an all time high for us. Our total confirmed positive cases at two hundred and fifty-one. I would point out to you that our recovered cases are at three thirty-eight. When you look at that forty, when you look at our overall total confirmed cases, we have eight hundred and fifty-one. Of those, only three hundred and thirty-eight are considered recovered. What that's telling you is cases are coming in faster than the time allotted for people to recover. So we are, we're gapping. So what that means is we have more active cases right now who are currently under isolation. So, we're watching that. Uh, our fourteen posit- fourteen day positivity rate is at twenty-six point three. You probably got a press release yesterday regarding an additional death in our county, which brings us up to six. Um, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on that report, so I think you have a hard copy of it. Yesterday, the governor spoke at six. Did you have an opportunity to hear her? If not, here's a summary of the enhanced public health measures that go into effect today. And they run through December tenth. There are some significant changes that were laid out last night. She did make a mask mandate for indoor spaces. And they're required on all areas that are open to the public, where you're gonna be within six feet of one another for fifteen minutes or longer. She also did, our governor did some restrictions regarding gathering sizes. And that would be in our, in any setting, social, community business, or leisure gathering. The restriction is fifteen people indoors, thirty people outdoors. And that applies to gatherings of all sorts, with the exception of ordinary course of business for government or businesses. Um, all sporting and recreational events are paused, except for high school, college, and professional sports. For, um, the sports that are allowed at the high school level, um, a limit has been put on only two spectators for high school athletes.
But students can, can be closer than six feet and, and are not required to wear a mask.
And that's reflecting the actual athletes, right?
Oh, okay. Cause I'm sitting here thinking.
Spectators, right. And I don't, I don't think that's well articulated here.
Cause I think everybody looks at that.
So, um, right. So the spectators must wear a mask. There can only be two per athlete. And then the competitors do not necessarily have to wear masks, particularly if it would be a problem for their activity. You'll see that there are restrictions on restaurants and bars. Um, notably that they close at ten P M. That there's that increased expectation for wearing masks.
And after ten is when it starts spreading.
Well, as you can imagine, well, as you can imagine, because the later in the evening, as more drinking and social activity occurs, you let down your inhibitions and there's more potential for super-spreading events. And that, there is just.
Well, if you start at five, you could be pretty good.
Start at noon and you're good.
I just didn't know.
I think.
I did read.
We all have experienced the behavior changing later in the night. Um. Right. Amen. Um, fitness centers, all group activities are currently prohibited. You know, and then there's, uh, increased restrictions for prolonged contact establishments, such as bowling alleys and pool house. Um, all non-elective, I'm sorry, no, non-essential and elective surgeries have been reduced, reduced by fifty percent. That's to keep more beds open. Did I hand these up? So there's more beds open. Um, the problem that we're seeing in Mills County, as well as the state, is we do not have this virus under good control. Numbers are going up at an alarming rate. And I think primarily we're concerned about our healthcare system being able to have capacity to meet the need as we head into these next few months before, um, a vaccine becomes available. Um, as a side note, Glenwood Community School District is, is now on remote learning until after the holidays. All schools, all buildings. They, they joined in. And you know, that's gonna be one incubation period if we come back after Thanksgiving, the Monday following. Hopefully, we can get a, a kickstart and, and go again. Yep, yep. And then the, you know, all the classes are being held remotely. So, you know, we, we've put the school leadership and the teachers under particular stress this year. And it's, it's not been easy for them. And so, just acknowledging that their job is hard right now. The other thing that I would just throw out ever so briefly is I have had questions about different businesses staying open or shutting down. Particularly, there have been questions about, you know, what will happen with the courthouse. And from a public health perspective, just my, you know, two cents on the issue. I think it's really important to look at where is the disease spreading? So when you look at the courthouse and you have the general public coming in, are we seeing any spread of COVID by the general public coming in? And I would venture to say no, because I think our courthouse and other businesses, if you have really good mitigation in place. So you guys have a, a mask mandate, you're, that's being enforced, I think, to the very best of our ability. People are coming in with a mask. You have very good signage. When I come in at any given time, I see that people are.
You read it?
Well, I, using your footprint, sometimes if I just look at the bright red feet, it's helpful. I just think there's very good visual reminders. And then I think you also have your plexiglass in place. So I think one thing that we see, and it really is true.
Yeah, what more can you do?
Well, what you know is when you do those things, the spread of disease is definitely contained. So to my knowledge, I don't know that you're having any patron to patron or patron to employee spread, because your mitigation is in place. So as long as you can look at it and see that you have good containment, it's not necessarily recommended that you would change practice.
And now that the voting is done, hopefully it slows down a little bit, so we're not having this.
Sure.
Man, you're rolling your eyes at me. Ooh, it's still crazy?
I mean, I don't. I mean, we still, we don't have, I mean, we don't do.
The lineup.
The licenses haven't been real bad. But a lot of places, most places are by appointment only. So I haven't seen the craziness there. But, I mean, yeah, we don't have as many people hanging out in the scene.
Yeah, getting a little bit better, so.
That's all I have.
It's just when you shut down the courthouse, it just blocks everything back.
I was gonna say, we had a, um.
Holy cow.
A survey come out throughout all of the auditor's offices and courthouses. How many are, even in our district, how many are closed to the public and blah, blah, blah. And really, there's not that many, but most of them, most have a driver's li- the driver's license is by appointment. But that's, that's about it, that I can, that we've seen.
Anything else, Ricky Boy?
Just, I think we talked about risk in our county departments. You know, I think I may have mentioned last week that the V A office asked for some plexiglass capability. She hadn't had anything down there, you know, the veteran, uh, businesses picking up the, and, and their office spaces are not large. And so when you're seeing your desk, Becky, you're seeing over here, and some of the vets get up because they wanna see what are you working on. So, um, we had some spare of the ones everybody, the other departments. So I put three sets down and set them up, uh, quarter, quarter down there. So they, they're kinda got some good protection down there now on that hill. So, um, we still, as far as P P and stuff, man, uh, there is still, you know, the E M S services are burning through it because of the calls up through the resource center. Loma is burning through it pretty rapidly. Uh, of course, last week I mentioned to you that the state has gone to another operation of resource management. Again, I, I think they want us to use out of our cash first before we replenish and things of that nature. So that's gonna have to be managed. And, uh, our source of, of, uh, picking up is out of our county and so on. Let's discuss it then, on, uh, what they think the initial supply is gonna be and how to draw that, uh, that more efficiently, so.
Is the school reaching out to you?
Yeah, the school is, uh. They, uh, well, we, the state had been offering cloth masks here the last two months. And first round, uh, one of the school has reached, we had asked for six thousand adult size mask. Those came in the elec- first part of October. And, uh, East Mills had delayed ordering about another week or two afterwards. And they asked for, I think, uh, the, the pediatric masks weren't available at the time. And so they asked for that, so they came in and delivered. And then here recently, we did a thirty day, thirty day supply, they call it. So here recently, I ordered again for the Loma District and East Mills. Loma asked for six thousand adults, six thousand pediatric, cause they didn't seem available. They did come in here last week and they were delivered, uh, and then, uh, for distribution. And then, uh, East Mills ones came in and they ended up with, uh, oh, what was it? Pediatric, there was maybe a couple thousand pediatric and they ordered and, uh, they, they, they were shorted about five hundred adults. I just made that difference up with that guy. Took those in the school. So I don't know how long the state's gonna keep. I think the state's gonna shift that requisition piece over to these nodes possibly. Uh, but we're doing it on our web portal, ordering with the state, so it's all visible anyway. Just a, it's a process of really picking up and how it's delivered.
So you don't have to wait real long?
Well, and even before when I ordered. Now, D O T delivered these masks last week. And it's just, I think we're trying to cut down our D O T and the state trail making these deliveries to all points of state. So they're going to these regional nodes, so they're gonna supply, uh, but I don't know how long that's gonna last, based on how long the state wants to fund. Now, the state, by supplying those supplies, as far as the presidential declaration, then they're the ones that does cost recovery on that. They'll take their bills, um, they'll put them in the hopper and force that seventy-five percent, uh, federal, um, and that's ten percent states. So fifteen percent would, would be on the state to make up that difference, which would have to come out of their reserve fund up there, just like we would. You know, unless it's a year. We've only had one disaster that I know of last, that it ended up at the end, uh, state ended up, all the money they got from the feds, ended up making a hundred percent match. So we didn't have any match at all that one year. That's the one disaster seven, they've done that, and I can't remember, it wasn't eleven, can't remember which one it was. But I, I thought we might get that in nineteen, but that didn't happen. So, and, uh, and that, this COVID thing, I think they're just trying to support as much as they can, because this stuff's hard to get, uh, some of this stuff. So, um, right now, I'm having trouble with Tyvax and stuff. And gals are big enough, some of our departments and rescue departments, everyone's supporting this call. My concern is within the county, um, within the county employees, we've gotta protect ourselves from the public, but it's within, the threat's within. And so we ought to be watchful, department heads have to be aware that you have to get good communication amongst your fellow employees, your peers. And, and you need to be thinking that, hey, I'm coming to work every day. Uh, what has been my social activity, what has been my family activity? Is there a risk, or do I need advice, and have a discussion with my department kind of out? And, you know, I think we just need to be cautious within our departments, because remember, we have a life too, just like these other people come into this business. The second part of it is, we started, I started to see some positive cases in the first responders. And, uh, this could affect, I got a text last night about one, and, and one of our depart- another one of our departments. And that could cause a cascade effect. Uh, we start losing some of our first responders, or they get exposed and have to go on quarantine, or say their spouse, you know, is positive, and then they are in close contact. They're essential workers, as long as they're asymptomatic, but there's always that concern that they become symptomatic. We've had some become symptomatic, and they test positive. So this could affect the ability to go through these calls, fire calls, these rescue calls. And, uh, and that means we're gonna have to be on our toes, somehow we're gonna mutually aid. So that's what I'm worried about, is getting into our first responders, and then we can't go help people.
We'll have to go through it, it's gonna happen.
Yeah. It's just the people, it's, it's, I don't think we're gonna go through it, we've had a few now so far. And hopefully, uh, it doesn't get much worse. But I imagine people will be a cycle, it's a psych- it's like everybody else. And so, but we have to keep, keep our hands on it. We're gonna have to, you know, react properly and make sure we get enough resources out to these calls. I guess the cares money, was it last week it came in?
What?
Cares money came in last week. Cares money came in last week. The auditor provided treasurer revenue drop at that end, so it's there. I've got one admin thing that I talked to auditor about yesterday. Malvern's trying to put in for cares, apparently one of the things they have to have is, for some reason, this is the auditor. Is this their auditor, or is it the cares thing?
She said cares thing, is what it said in her thing.
Well, she asked for the latest.
Ooh, she, city clerk.
City clerk.
Mary.
Mary. She asked for the latest twenty D, you know, for, uh, communications. So I dug it out, scanned it in Senator. He said, no, I need nineteen twenties, which is the year of four, for some reason. Well, I dug in and my current folder I grabbed was not in there, which it normally is. Malvern's the first city that pays us. I mean, she is on my, you know, I, just to get the check to us, number one, get that twenty D signed by you guys. You, you all signed, and you were the chair at the time. You all signed twenty D's in all the town, we did it proactively that year. We had, you go ahead and take your part first, so I can push it to them and get signatures from the councils. And, uh, so I have all those signatures, and Malvern just didn't get one in that slot. So what I need to do is probably after you're done here, just for admin purposes, have you sign one so I can send it to her, until I find out where I recorded that other one at, the original one, cause I have all the other ones. So, uh, Malvern is the one that always, every year, within July, boom, they want it, they wanna consummate that. Cause that allows everyone to other things, I guess, over a bunch of percent. So, um, other than that, yeah, the numbers are going up. Uh, we, like, we didn't think it wasn't gonna happen. These deaths.
Not this much.
These, well, these deaths kinda concerned me, you know, we kinda, last week, uh, around after this meeting, that afternoon, about four o'clock in the tenth, we had a reporter number five death. And, uh, then, then Julia decided, maybe I oughta put something out to the public on the weekend. And so on Friday, we put a media release on talking about the increase in positivity rate in the county. And we just had a little narrative here going on about where we are, what the potential is, what we need to be aware of. Kinda put that out there for people to look at on the weekend if they so desired. And then of course, they'll say this one, number six, for, um, you know, uh, you don't wanna see that happen at all, let alone people in the sixth, so.
Our projected days to double right now is twenty. Days to double. So how many days are they projecting it takes for our numbers to double? And I think yesterday it was twenty. Do you think about our numbers doubling in twenty days? It's, it's getting to be a pretty big number. Anyway, I know you're on a time constraint.
Yes.
Richard?
Yes?
Best wishes to you.
I'm awake, I'm awake, I'm, I'm not sleeping.
Are you wearing your mask?
You bet that, I, I don't trust you guys at all.
Thank you, Julie.
It's Julie.
I'll just add to our, I'll get the turn, I'll get it out here, and take care of this admin.
Thanks, Larry.
Taking out the afternoon off for your birthday party?
I gotta move, uh, supplies, especially rescuing stuff, so I'll do that today, ready, project.
Larry. Living the dream. Uh, so I had a NACO phone call, doing a survey. Um, West Central is tonight in Harlan. Uh, still visuals and zooms and, I think, yeah. Have you heard anything more about our cabins? Are they here?
No, they're up and running.
Are they sat?
Uh, no, they're, they're sat, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, they're plumbing them.
Have you looked at them, are they green? I'm so excited to see them.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're handy.
All right.
No, the only, the only happy I have got is I really appreciate all the things, the thoughts and prayers that's been sent our way. And it's really been appreciated, thank you.
Well, we're with you, you know that.
By the way.
Hey. So, getting right into it, um, no utility permits to report. Uh, brings me to my first action item.
No, no, no approval of purchase of workstation, oh, sorry.
Approval of, uh, purchase of workstation for shop foreman. We kinda talked about getting, uh, workstations for shop foreman and road foreman. Um, currently use a really old piece of crap, uh, laptop, so. Again, getting upgraded, you know, with the move into the new facility. Um, this is only for the shop foreman. Been talking with the road foreman, would prefer to have a laptop for him. And the cost of laptops are just really high right now. And so we're gonna hold off and, uh, survive without for a little while and hope that laptop prices come down.
Across the waters yet, or?
I'm not sure, it's just.
High demand.
With, uh, everybody working remotely, uh, supply, demand, everybody wants a laptop, so.
Can't mind them, seriously.
So this is just for one workstation, for the shop foreman, for a price of one thousand eighty dollars, sixty-five cents.
And is that from C D W?
Yes.
Okay.
Lot of these from Patrick, uh, Dr. Patrick for Alba.
Nice little move to approve one thousand eighty dollars and sixty-five cents?
Got a motion by Vinton, second by Crouch, to approve the purchase of the workstation for the shop foreman. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Good.
The quote we got for the laptop was sixteen hundred dollars, so. We'll wait.
Yeah, no kidding.
Uh, the other action item I have is for approval of pay-out, pay application thirteen to Genesis Contracting for construction of the new shop building. It is for the amount of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred thirty-two dollars, twenty-seven cents.
Corey, you said two seven seven, six three two, two seven?
Yes.
Got it. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Why make a motion to approve the payback application thirteen to Genesis Contracting?
I made the motion, the second, Corey, how close are we to, uh, you know, uh, getting to the bottom line?
We have, we have six hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-four cents left, uh, balance to finish.
After this payment?
After this payment, that includes your teenage.
Didn't you say last time we were under?
Uh, we are currently twenty-two thousand under by change order.
Doing great, Corey.
All right, we got a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
There's a lot of sign here, isn't it?
Yep. And over half of that is exterior paving. The rest of it, just, uh, electrical is the other big one.
Lighting's not good.
And, uh, second of another core on Thursday, um, that'll be on the north side of the building, which, um, we'll then have a drive around the whole building. Uh, I think that'll just leave the parking paving in front. Uh, I went through the building last week. Interior finishes are, are wrapping up, paint's been up, windows are in, stain on the windows. A lot of the flooring's been put in, in the administration offices, lighting, bathroom fixtures, fixtures haven't been put in yet, but they're, they're sitting on site or in, in the phase. So it's really coming along, so it's exciting.
How exciting, Corey.
Um, how's there, how's the rumor that's gonna go? How's it looking right now?
It is, uh, I can't remember if the flooring's in in there. Um, it's got the paint, drywall paint, windows are in. Um, not all the light fixtures are in yet, but it's.
Well, we're ready for it to go whenever you're ready, because you'll have to bring some boys up here and haul it probably in the back of the truck with a lot of.
If you need a smaller trailer with a little ramp body, you can just go out to my place and get it.
Okay.
There's stuff in it, just throw it out in my driveway. But it's an easy in, easy out, though you don't have to lift it up into a.
And just let Patrick know when you're planning to do it, so that he can make, he can disconnect everything and make sure. Obviously, he'll be resetting it up for you, but.
You guys have a small trailer there, if you don't.
I have one enclosed, but I, I think it's probably too small. I don't know either.
It's a handy little trailer, Corey. A little bigger than a golf cart trailer.
It's not super heavy, it's just awkward, because you have to be really careful with the screen and stuff.
Four guys up there, they can move it.
Okay. Yeah, well.
I would just move it up the front, move it up the street up, sure.
Yeah, we could probably take it anytime, put it in the, if anything, we can put it into the shop bays, um, where a lot of our equipment's sitting right now. Or, not equipment, but furniture and stuff like that.
We might be able to use the old box, that box with the new one, we might be able to help. Just visit with Patrick when you're, when you're ready and he can.
Yeah.
I, I have a packing blanket or two in there too, also, so.
Yeah, I've been, we talked with, I, I brought Patrick to my last progress meeting, actually, with H G M, uh, Genesis last week, just to make sure that we're able to, uh, get uploaded and connected, um, right away.
Getting fiber through a pipe, huh?
Uh.
Did somebody step on it, or?
Apparently, uh, they, they, they bored the, um, the conduit, and then they put in a rope. And, and somewhere in between fence posts getting installed. And when, uh, fiber came back to pull the rope and put, put the actual fiber line through, they, uh, they lost the rope or, or it got stuck or snagged in there. And so, one side blames the other, side the other side blames them. But you can't really locate conduit full without any fiber or, or, uh, anything in it. So, so it's quite possible that when the fence posts were going in, they hit that conduit, so. They, they'll have to figure it out.
Yeah.
So.
We'll get it fixed.
Yeah. Um, seemed like I was gonna say something. Can't remember right now. So, general discussion, uh, do you wanna give you guys a heads up that I'm meeting with U S Cellular, uh, this week? I met with them last year and talked, and talked to them a little bit about, uh, some fleet management software and some G P S tracking, um, that the county might be able to utilize. Kinda like a G P S tracking on our plows and, and graders, just to know, you know, be able to manage our, uh, our maintenance and our snow removal and our grading work a little, little bit better. But also using the same software to track and do record keeping with our, uh, uh, equipment maintenance, you know.
With U S Cellular.
Why that?
Western Iowa.
Uh, because, because we use U S Cellular right now with our, uh.
Cell phones?
Cell phones, yeah.
We're just going, what I hear, they're going downhill in the area, so.
Okay.
I know if somebody wanna dive in, she goes, it, it may, it may, it may not hurt to check with chat. You want a number?
Yes.
Alan DeBolt?
Um, I probably do have some of them already. Chat mobility instead.
Yeah. Seven one two. Three seven zero, sixty-five hundred. It's worth looking at, Corey.
Bolt, the bolt?
E E B O L T, just like it sounds, I think it's capital B, but.
Capital.
Yeah. He's asked why we haven't given them options on our cell phone service here anyway, cause they're local and economic developments, so. Throw them a bone.
At, earlier on, and they didn't have what we needed. And at that one time, they didn't have the connectivity, because we've got the hotspots and everything through U S Cellular, because they didn't have it.
They're, they're part of, they're tied in with Verizon now, so.
And U S Cellular gave us discounts too, so.
And U S Cellular was local. Now they're not, but.
I'm taking this meeting as more of a informational, seeing, seeing what we can.
Yep.
How, I mean.
Yeah.
I, they pitched me over last year as this, uh, and, and maybe it's a software that we can use through Chat Mobility instead. But, uh, Cypress Solutions is what it's called, and I, I would D O T uses it. And they listed off a couple of counties that used it. And, and they said they had the capability to track, uh, aggregate placement. and, and they said they had the capability to track, uh, aggregate placement, um, so like when the rock, uh, trucks tipped, and so. Um, and, and I've had talks with my road foreman who would love, um, a better way to keep track of how much rock is placed at what location.
Yeah.
Instead of our, we, we got a tonnage from the quarry, and we know that we've placed this many loads between intersection and intersection, but we don't really know any, that, that's as accurate as we can get right now, so. That's something, um, and that's kind of, just wanna bring in secondary roads kinda to the twenty-first century. Everything is paper, hard copies right now, and.
You can follow DOT snow plows anywhere, so.
Mm-hmm, and, and I don't think I wanna go right away to give the public information to know where plows are, but if I can know where they are without having to call up somebody, uh, that sure saves me a lot of time.
We can call them, say they're on their way, they just west of you.
Mm-hmm, and, and maybe just a little bit to be able to say to the person who's, I haven't had a blade in two years, pull that information up, and we can go over it, but, uh, also, talking about upgrading to twenty-first century, uh, I wanna put in our, uh, electronic work order system, instead of our hard copying work order system that we use right now, um. Just really helps with filing, um, once again, uh, I've called eight times in the past year, "Well, we have you on record for calling you twice", and both times, road foreman or whoever got that message, we haven't marked this completed or marked this whatever, and, and just, that, that is not, it's not gonna be a cost, because Service Bureau, uh, offers a work order system that I wanna utilize, so. Uh, work order system, GPS, our fleet management software, and then, uh, the covert inventory.
See on the main titer of the GPS, is, you know, how it, you're, so you get the ruts out and it would either sink in or go up, or?
What?
As far as like knowing where the blades at?
Yeah.
They, they said that that fleet software has, uh, the ability to track when the blade's up and when it's down.
You just have to drill?
Yeah, but, so, just.
How cool is that?
Trying to, trying to update this to the twenty-first century, it's not like, is there a wrong before?
Get, get, get outta here.
That's really all I have, so.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Corey.
What do you have, Carol, tonight, I got a question for you, so.
Can I get you to answer? Um, sure, yeah, you can go get her, yeah, and I can come answer your question.
Thanks, Corey.
Thanks, Corey.
All right, Luanne, what do you want?
Richard is on the line, so scoot over so we can hear you.
She's been talking to him.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
I have, uh, a bid from COT, um, it is in my budget, it's for twenty-three books. And, um, ten loose books and thirteen inbound books.
Ten loose, did you say?
Mm-hmm, and thirteen bound, so the bound ones take a little bit longer, and I have a list here of the exact books that he is doing. So, okay, the total, the total bid would be thirty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. We would pay seventeen thousand, six hundred and fifteen after this contract is signed, and then we would pay the other half once the job is complete. He thinks they could be here sometime in March or April. It just, I think, kinda depends on.
Life.
Yeah.
Yeah, last year they did it up in the, the courtroom, which worked perfectly. Carol said we could possibly get the boardroom, or that we could get the boardroom.
Yes.
Um, I just, I have a contract, but I don't know if I sign it or if one of you guys sign it, and then I just email it to.
Who signs it really probably isn't a big deal, is it?
No, I think, I think Goose has signed that before, so I don't know why, yeah.
Yeah, I mean Goose signs it, what do you buy the car, we don't.
So, so basically, when it's all said and done, it's, you know, the county doesn't have the money, but you're on the hook.
Personally.
Yeah, yeah, but, but don't let that bother you.
Yeah.
My name's Lori.
They'll set up a payment plan for you. All right, guys, should we let her do some bucks?
I make a motion to approve the COT system for Luanne for digitizing records for, should we say, thirty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty? Or should we say, we gotta pay the seventeen, but that's the total.
I second the motion.
We've got a motion by Vinton, second by Crouch, to approve the COT system for digitizing records, is there any discussion?
How many are you having in your budget this year for that?
Um, thirty-seven. So we're, we are under.
Sure.
And, uh. So what I need to be on the agenda, come back in for the second half of this.
No, no, we're, we're gonna approve the whole thing now. Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll approve the contract, so you'll be good to go. Any other discussion?
You're done. It's a great deal.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So how many more pages is this gonna take?
I should say, how many do you have left after that?
Yeah, Lisa went through a few rounds of it, and you've got a couple.
This is, this will be all of the books on the index and the, the law, everything on the wall.
Oh, okay.
Um.
Wow.
He, now we would start on Angie in between, right now is scanning the military, so that's been awesome. Corey started that, and then Angie's been finishing up. Um, there's a lot of patent books and a lot of those older, we have a lot of survey books.
Get them all done, yep.
Yeah, you gotta get those through.
Makes it easier, I mean, I use Iowa Land Records, like it's going out of style, and then the auditors.
Find some real good stuff in there.
Her index too, the online index, that's, I use it a lot, it keeps, keeps me out of the offices.
Absolutely.
And I can, it's time, effort, I mean, instead of going to you or going to Monkey County or wherever I go, I can.
Pull it up.
Hit it.
And that saves on these bound books.
Oh, without a doubt, yeah, you get, yeah, you get more life out of your books, it just, it helps everybody. And they're, we're not bugging you, because where's this at, and then, oh, here's my fifty cents, or my dollar fifty, or whatever. It's more efficient.
And then if there were ever something, God forbid, anything ever happened.
Look at Pace County, they had that fire, you know, a few years ago, and they lost a bunch of stuff, I mean, I was doing.
Can't ever get that.
No, 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 then you pay big money to get them, to see if they can pull, you know, some of it out of it that didn't burn or get wet.
So after they digitize these books, is that then a copy somewhere?
Yes, it, it's on the, it's on the Mills Counties, online, and you can go up and.
Yeah.
See, this very first one up here is eighteen fifty-three to eighteen fifty-seven, I mean, think of the, the rockers, but.
Eighteen fifty-three. Wow, in that, when the town was being formed, it's, what was it, Coons?
Coonsville.
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 I didn't wanna say that, too. Oh, would we be going to jail by now if we didn't change that name?
Oh, I wonder what jail it'll go in. And you know, it's kinda interesting, because I did not know.
Is that your middle name? Lonnie Scott?
No, 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 Scott's my employee.
Oh.
Oh, don't you just love that?
Bicycles, there's not a bicycle on there. But if you can, th- this is just one way to look at it, Carol, but it's, it's not all on land records, it'd be on the Mills County site, I probably should be searching there. But this is.
This is the newer stuff that we do every day.
Yeah. But if you go down here for surveys, I mean, you can look at treasures, you can do warranty deeds, there's all kinds of things you can put claim deeds.
On that, no.
No, th- this is just something similar, this is just something similar.
This is something that we've been to every day, Iowa Land Records.
Yeah.
Every day, what, everything that we've put on for that day, once it's scanned and proofread, we send it to here.
Oh, my God. So, interesting.
And then they redact it, they make sure everything, there's not, you know, just making sure there's been some issues, but, no, it's very nice.
So you can just pull a survey up there, all numbered, yeah, this is everything in Onewood. But I can pull it up, and then I have a copy of it, and it's got the recording information on it. Computer's a little slow, I don't know, that's, that's weird to. It's probably the computer.
Oh, of course.
But there's access to it, otherwise I'd have to get in the car, not necessarily here, but walk over to the courthouse, li- ask her a book at Santa, or find the index, go find the book to ten, take the book, open it up, or pop the page out, make a copy, put the book back together, pay her for a copy, instead I can just go enter.
And I've given that, I, I've had several surveyors, you know, ask me about, and they said, "Oh, can we come in and look at your books?" And I said, "Why don't you just go online and look at the COT first then?"
Right.
We don't know about that.
One of the fortunate counties that were this far ahead?
We, uh, we're farther ahead than most, Pott County's got a pretty good job on it.
Oh, they do.
Honestly, wouldn't you think?
Yeah, right, I mean, very, we have more many than.
Very fortunate to get that, so now he's gonna go to the COT.
Yeah, yeah, and this is through the county's website.
Oh, you were on Iowa Land Records.
Yeah, 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 so I can look at book, just call it page one. Search.
Yeah.
It's thinking.
Is it? Oh, okay, it is, okay.
Oh, yeah, it is. But this pulls the image up, see how old that is? That's nineteen hundred.
So that's what's.
But now I don't have to go, now I don't have to go dig through her books, it's, it's.
Cause the books are in order.
I can hit print, yeah. So it's, it's, it, it's handy. Yeah.
Not worth that.
Yeah, thank you.
Very cool.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah. You're up.
Hi, girlfriend.
What did you say last time, Spinagel? I think we're calling, I think we're calling. Yeah, you're calling Kim.
Okay, was it bad? Okay.
We're just picking on it. I think you were on the agenda. No, he didn't.
He did, okay, okay. Uh, so last week, um, we had our semi-annual fire inspection.
Okay.
Um, I got one bad smoke detector in the building, which is in the jail, um, I got a bid five sixty-six, ten, is what it is. And they will, they've ordered the part, they'll come in, come and put it in whenever it gets it.
Who's that to?
Uh, Johnson Controls.
Johnson Controls.
It's in the jail, did you think?
Yeah, it, it is, so what it's doing is, it's not lighting up or anything, when they did all the tests, um, it does sound the alarm in the actual control room, but it's not lighting up and functioning like it is, so.
Fix your brand new tail.
I told her, I said, "Go ahead and get that over", that's a necessity, and then we'll just, yeah, pay for it.
So, each smoke detector costs five hundred and sixty-five cents?
Um, they told me it's kinda like with the heating and air.
I mean, this is a, a smoke detector that you.
Program it and everything, I mean, no, it's not just your.
Yeah, they're tied into the rest of the building.
So, since we are Johnson Control, you know, cause everybody in the county now is universal with them, but the smoke alarm system is not there, so it costs more when you don't have their stuff.
Of course.
Right.
Great marketing.
Uh-huh, it is.
Wow. Well, I make a motion for you to get a new smoke detector, Kim, for five hundred and sixty-six dollars and ten cents.
Yeah, I will second that.
We've got a motion and a second to approve a new smoke detector, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And, and just so y'all know, we did the virtual jail inspection this year, he picked a few dates.
He did send me that email, it's, he did good again, yeah, thank you.
Had me go back, and I actually had to videotape some stuff, and then he picked different days to send him information from and everything, so we're good.
Yep.
So, everything else passed and.
Should I forward those to you, or does, do those just go in your file?
You should get in, and we, you usually file a copy of it.
I think, cause what he had me do is, um.
Gilbert still?
Yes, and he sends it to the chairman of the board, the county attorney, and to me, so.
Over at Long Lake?
I'm assuming you keep a copy of it as well.
Yes.
But we, we have gotten them and just put them in the thing, but I'm sure we could probably get them to get it.
So, how did he get the camera to?
Um, actually, I had to take my phone and, you know, cause what he does is, he goes around and he talks to, um, he goes around in each cell, turns on the phone, or the showers, the faucets, the sinks, make sure everything's running and working, so. I actually had to have somebody go with me, turn on all the waters, we videotaped it, then walked through, and then he actually, he talks to inmates too about how we treat them and how the food is and that type of thing, and, and he basically just called for that, and, uh, here's a list of the inmates, and he just asked randomly who to talk to, and so, did the best he could.
Good, good, good.
So.
Good job.
Thank you.
You bet.
Yeah.
Have a good day.
Planning and zoning board, appoint two members.
Okay, so, they, just for an update for you, Richard, um, only two people applied, um, for the position, and, um, there are two openings because of the legislative stuff that we cannot, no, we have to have people from the rural area now instead of anyone from the city, um, thank you to the larger counties of the state of Iowa, you guys have made our life a little more crazy. So, the two people are John Larson, which John had applied before on the planning and, or the court of adjustment, and I think we, gender-wise, we went with a female, because that's what we were replacing. And the other one is, uh, Joe Martin, and, um, both of these, um, terms will be up in December of twenty-one. So it's a one-year term, right now, they are five in the, when they, but they'll be on it for a year and then reappoint.
Hey, Carol?
Yes.
Was that, was that Morrison?
No, Martin, Joe Martin.
Joe Martin, the one with the first one?
Oh, John Larson, L-O-R-S-O-N.
Yeah, he's a banker from Riddell.
Okay.
Right, Randolph.
Randolph, yeah.
Good guy.
I, I know both of them.
Well, I make a motion to appoint John Larson and Joe Martin on the planning and zoning board for one year, and then reappoint for, and then that would be for five.
Well, we'll look at it then, if they still wanna retain.
Right.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Yeah, we've got a motion and a second to approve John Larson and Joe Martin to the Mills County Planning and Zoning Board, beginning January one.
I think they're gonna bring them in a little bit early, just so that they can work with, um, the two that are going off and the rest of the board, so they can kinda see where things are going and what's going on, and get some direction from them as well.
Good, any other discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor?
Aye.
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 They're appointed.
Molly can now send them a congratulations letter.
Give them a certificate.
Yeah, oh, yes.
Certificate of appointment.
Yes, that's a, that's a wonderful thing that we have.
Okay, thank you. Um, one of, um, did Jolene talk to you about the cell phone thing, of what she was in here?
Just a little bit, she said you.
So I told her I'd bring her in.
Okay.
Do it again. So, um, uh, here's a, a like, a, a true, um, a really cool thing, um, every year in November, uh, local option does what they call a catch-up, or they take money away if you've been overpaid. Well, we got our catch-up payment, which was included within our regular payment, I think we're supposed to get like seventy-nine thousand, and we got two nineteen.
Sure.
So, that was.
Better that way than the other way.
Exactly, exactly, so I was pretty excited to see that yesterday, so.
Very good news.
With our, you know, some of our little project things, like, you know, for, um, you know, for Jared and some of those people, so. And I'll go get Jolene.
Is, is this for the self-fund administrator?
Yeah.
Okay.
Man, we are whipping through this morning.
It's good, looks like I have to go to Glenbrook before I go to Omaha.
Oh, how nice.
Put her in a cul-de-sac and they need the center set.
Where?
Glenbrook. Join in, water's fine.
Okay, so, um, let me give you a little background, Isaac, you, you know, does our health insurance. And Isaac, you know, we signed up with, yeah, Group Benefit Partners, uh, in the spring to kind of oversee. And, um, they've sent out a new list. Um, you know, our HRA option, it's a health reimbursement account and currently we go through secure benefits. And I know Richard can speak more for this, maybe Carol, oh, hey Richard.
I'm still here, what am I supposed to speak on?
Hey Richard.
Yeah, what am I speaking?
This is Jolene, I can send you this through your email, but, um, Isaac, Group Benefit Partners. Uh, gave us a couple new, uh, self-funded administrators to look at. So because, uh, I said you could speak more to the issues that some employees had with secure benefits. And the one we're looking at actually works Monday through Friday, eight to five, isn't that amazing? So secure benefits is who we currently have. I know. But I'll read you the email I got from Elizabeth Opie from Group Benefit Partners. Over the past six months, Isaac and Group Benefit Partners have researched multiple partial self-funded administrators. We have the, made the decision to partner with two, Midwest Group Benefits, MGB and Oxyant. Both will be integrated with Employee Navigator, that's where I go to enroll everyone. Enrollments will automatically be processed like your other Isaac-sponsored benefits are today. The monthly administration fee will also be included with your consolidated billing. Both MGB and Oxyant can also administer flexible spending accounts, we don't have those. So please see the attached comparison chart for more specific details on each vendor. If you want to change administrators for your partial self-funded, we recommend that the changes occur January first. If you do not want to make a change at this time, a response is not required. So basically what we're seeing here is we were paying four fifty per contract, we would now go to six fifty if we took Midwest. And eight fifty if we did Oxyant and the other plus is.
No monthly fee on it.
Right, right, exactly, there is not an admin fee, uh, with it and. And the other one, the Oxyant, they're eight to four thirty, but there's like even two bucks more cheap, uh, more spent, or four bucks more than the other one. So I think, looks to me like, yeah, Midwest Group Benefits looks like the good one, Richard.
Are you going to tell them?
Yes.
And they come out of Des Moines?
Yeah, they're, um. That's, this, this is the two groups that, uh. Elizabeth and Ryan from Group Benefit Partners have researched and recommends options for us. And I know, you know, Richard more firsthand than I do, that, um, some employers have had a terrible time with secure benefits.
Yeah.
Getting them to respond.
We've had a couple of employees that thought and thought and had to be, you know, I went behind that and said, okay, enough, enough, you know, let's, let's get this taken care of. And they've been very good about it, so as far as changing things much. Uh, I can't see where, what, what kind of benefits, you know.
So yes, yes, you, you agree with the changing to Midwest Group Benefits from what we currently have? Richard?
Yeah, they seem to be the most, uh.
Yeah, okay, just checking.
Well, I guess you could say, yeah.
He doesn't have a form, I didn't know he was online, I apologize, Richard, I would have sent it to you through your email if you would like to look at it, okay?
That would be fine.
I'll text it to him right now.
Oh, you're gonna make it today or next, or you're gonna wait for next week?
Yep. Molly's gonna send it to you, he's, yeah, he's texting it to you right now, even though you can't read it because you're on the phone.
Right.
And it's a good deal, I make a motion to approve Midwest Group Benefit.
Do we have to sign off on anything, Jolene?
They will give me stuff, I guess, I asked them if they had anything else to give me and I don't think until we actually say yes, we want to switch, that they'll bring, send you papers to sign off.
You want a second there, Richard?
It's time to come to, but I'm fine with it, so.
Okay, and this will start January first.
So instead of Blue Cross Blue Shield sending it to Secure Benefit.
Hey Carol?
Yeah.
I got, I got doctors calling in, so I'm gonna bring you out.
Okay.
Anything you got.
Yeah, the last two things are pretty much minimal, so you, you talk to the doctors, good to hear from you. Stay safe, Richard. Okay, so we got it, I'll just send them an email and let them know they can switch.
You didn't vote.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
Oh, aye.
There you go, three now. Okay, authorized chair to sign best management agreement with Maple Edge Farm Incorporated.
Well, I gotta find it again, it was here, I mean, what I did was this, I had it.
Um, Maple Edge is just another one of those, um.
Is it by Tacka Bill or?
No, it's the, it's with the TDBG stuff, here it is. So it's just another one of the best management practice maintenance agreements, they have to pay a portion which we get to keep.
True.
So.
That's certain filter strips, whatever.
Yep, yep, that's it.
All right, Carol?
All right, make a motion.
I will second that. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So where is that?
He can tell you when we get to sign it now.
It is in five seventy-two forty. Well, I got a few things there, but I can get you into vicinity, bait, bait house.
Sure. All right.
South of Gaston and west of a hundred and, three hundred and eightieth, north of Hutchins, somewhere in here, somewhere in that section. I'm sure it's just filter buffer strips.
Yeah, it is.
Things along that line.
Yeah, oh, yep, yep.
News of the ground, do we have more option out?
We do, um, uh, yeah, one seven five four one Kane Avenue. Um, who's that?
Oh, Haro, yeah, yeah.
Kena?
Kenoff, K-N.
Oh, Kenoff.
So he opt out, huh? Why does it take him this long?
Yeah, we have a few, they, I mean, they can back out right up to the end and so, and so can we, so, okay. K-A-N-O-U-F-F.
We only have one, I think we're waiting on paperwork on and, um, opting out and I think that's the only one left. That we know, it'd be Brian. But I've been working through Heidi, so I'm sure she, she said, she said she'd sign for me, Heidi, I'm just sending her a message and say, hey, we need that.
He's dumping garbage behind the garage, Molly, it's a mess, it's a mess. I don't know whether he thought maybe that would have gone with the demo, but.
Rocking out is not even doing that.
Isn't that bad? It's, it's awful. I guess so.
Yeah.
Well, I make a motion for Dwight, Mr. Kenoff to opt out or buy out.
I will second that motion, is there any discussion? How many have opt out now, roughly? Ten, twelve?
Twelve, I think.
Okay.
I think about twelve.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good.
They're working on the paperwork and I got on the, on the others, um. Have a couple things.
Okay, all right, thank you for listening, we'll see you next week.